All right, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, September 8th, 2015, and we'll start with roll call.
Ali Nichols.
Here.
Amy Seaboth-Wilson.
Yes.
Mike Den.
Here.
Barbara Dos.
Here.
Here.
Barb Stackhausen.
Here.
Tom Knoll.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
I'll account aboard.
First item on our agenda this evening is a ceremonial swearing-in of our new police officer, Devon Millot.
Good evening. It's my extreme pleasure to introduce Devon Millot. Devon comes to us as a Darlington Redbird, so don't hold that against him, but Southwest Tech grad of the two-year program, and then also the Southwest Tech Academy, and he's carrying on a long line of policing with a cousin, there's an uncle that's up at the cross, and then his father is the chief over in Bellman, so kind of a family affair. So again, we're very pleased to have Devon part of the PD.
Great.
Thank you. Hi, Devon Millot.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer. Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Actively.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge said duties of said office.
Discharge said duties of that office.
With the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability.
For that.
So hope we get it.
Devon, do you want to say anything, or you don't have to, but if you want to make any comment?
Should say it at the mic.
I guess I'm just, I'm honored to be a part of the Platteville Police Department. Great group of men and women to work with, and I'm excited to get my law enforcement career started.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
The next item is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved in a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion and action. First is council minutes from the August 13th and the August 25th meetings. B is payment of bills. C is financial report for August. D is appointments to boards and commissions, and this evening I have two, one to the Airport Commission, L.D. Mueller, and one to the Commission on Aging, Janet Sudmeyer. Licenses, one-year or two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol are included in the packet. We have four permit requests this evening. A street closing permit for St. Mary's Parish for the Parish Festival on September 27th, a parade permit for the Platteville High School on September 18th, a parade permit for UW Platteville Homecoming on October 10th, and a banner permit for 2016 Platteville Dairy Days through 9/12/16. Also included is Resolution 1521 proclaiming October 2015 as United Nations Month, and announcing the Halloween Trick or Treat Day, which is on October 31st, and the hours will be in the city from 4:00 p.m. until 7:00 p.m. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? We'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seaboth-Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are there any citizens' comments, observations, or petitions? We have one person who's asked to speak, but that's for something that's on the agenda later. Any department comments, anybody? Onto reports, Board Commission Committee reports, Police and Fire Commission, Dan?
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission, Killian, Knoll, or Stackhausen?
Nothing to add.
No addition.
Museum Board, Stackhausen?
Nothing to add.
Commission on Aging, Killian?
No addition.
Other reports included in the packet is the 2014 Single Audit Report, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for August, the Airport Financial Report for August, City Attorney Itemized Statement, also Department Progress Reports. Any questions or comments on any of those?
Is the single audit coming back next month?
Is there a reason to bring it back?
Well, usually somebody appears with it, nobody should appear with this one.
Do I have an answer for us?
No, the Single Audit Report is basically just reports showing, it's a requirement of when we get a federal grants of a certain amount, that that report is completed, it basically shows the federal and state grants that we receive. It's not the actual audit. That was presented previously. This is called a single audit, which basically is a requirement for federal government. It's for informational purposes.
Dwayne, the only thing I noticed in here, and I didn't understand what it was, is they're talking about some weaknesses on page eight. First discussion, material weaknesses identified, control deficiencies.
Right, it's probably normal for cities our size. I mean, the segregation of duties, you only have so many. We actually have to have a lot more employees to have everything segregated properly, but because of our size of the community, this is size, and this is one of the items they have to write up, but response is in there. The other part, preparation of financial statements, there again is an item, it's more or less done by larger cities. Communities our size don't normally do the whole, otherwise it'd cost a lot more for an individual working for the city to do this, so it's done by auditors.
That's what they were talking about then, when they said that it would be better to have city employees take care of a certain reports or so on and so forth? Is that what you're talking about?
Right, the second part, the preparation of financial statements, that's, we do a report monthly, but for the actual audit report, it's a lot more detailed, and it would require a lot more expertise that a staff our size doesn't really have, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions in any of the reports?
Well, this audit thing, I could talk to you in private about it, but for example, on page nine, it says under this 2014-001, see corrective action plan. Underneath the next one, 002, it says corrective action plan, and I'm trying to find the corrective action plans.
It doesn't show in this report, apparently. It's basically all we're saying, we do the best we can with the staff that we have, and it's overseen by the city manager and the city council.
So there's no actual plan given?
There's a response that's sent with the audit that goes in with it, but it doesn't show on this report here, no.
Okay.
If you want, I can bring that next time.
That would make it difficult to find.
Okay, I can bring it next time if you want, or just give it to, send it out to you.
And so my comment was going to be that see page so-and-so, but there needs to be something said there that is not in this document when I go looking for it.
Well, it's basically, a response is pretty much what the recommendation are, that's what the response is, but the response does not show on this report, no.
Okay, and then on, I guess on the first pages, there's one in the summary. On page one, it says, it's item 2014-002. To me, if you would put a page number, that's in this document, put a page number so it's easy to find. I realize the document's very small, but I don't particularly care to search all over to find something.
Okay, it's well.
I'm trying to make this easier to read.
Okay, I can mention it to the auditors.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, easier to read.
Any other questions?
I did, it's not in the reports, but I've had a couple of people ask me why there's all of this activity around manholes and water thing, water.
Water valves.
Valves, little things like that. What is all this activity? I mean, it's like, I go this street and that street, and then today there was a big hole and.
What we have is, this is in preparation for our thin overlay. What's happening is the Water and Sewer Department is raising the manholes and the valves so that, so that when we do the thin overlay in the next week or two, that there won't be such a large dip in the road, big bump, when they come through and they do the paving, that, so, and it happens to be on some of our busier streets, like Mineral Street and Chestnut Street and Ridge Avenue and places like that, so people see it a lot more.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on any of the reports?
President Nichols?
Yes.
I don't know if everyone noticed, but at the bottom of my department report, I talked a little bit about council communication, and proposing that as both a time saver to staff and then also to try and get more timely information to you, that we shift our department reports instead of being every council meeting to once a month, which is what is required by statute, and then we add, though, a weekly update that would go out via email of kind of what happened that week to keep council members apprised of what's going on on a more timely basis.
Comments on that suggestion?
I like the idea of the weekly updates. I think that helps keep things, issues fresh in our memory better, which is nice.
And I don't mind the monthly staff reports, I think that's fine.
I do, too. I think it's easier to read a packet, to do it once a month when you have more material, because there could be more material attached if necessary.
I would agree. I think that having weekly email updates is as beneficial as having twice monthly reports.
Okay, what does the staff think? I can imagine.
I didn't chat with them about it, but I assume they'll be fine with it.
It's just a question.
They won't be as in-depth, it sounds like, right? They'll just be summaries of key issues rather than, they're not the equivalent report every week.
Correct, and it's pretty common in city government that you'll see these weekly city manager reports. I'll probably ask each department to submit an item that popped up during the week, and then have my administrative assistant compile those and review them and send them off. It could be issues that came up, it could be events that are happening, meetings, important meetings that took place that we think you need to know about, or might like to know about.
I like it.
Okay.
So for example, City Attorney, he would give us one just once a month.
Correct.
He does.
He has some statements in there, Brian, no offense, but it is keep occurring over and over.
It's because I do them over and over.
Over and over again from what you're doing.
And if, I mean, I don't mean this, any more detail on those subjects would not be worth your time.
Well, it talks about various matters, for example.
So do you want to talk to the city manager about what material you want more of regarding?
No, but I'm just saying, it doesn't, when I read that every, every two weeks, it doesn't tell me much.
One thing about it, though, if we went into more detail, it's going to take a lot more of Brian's time, and time is money. So, you know, if your folks are willing to spend more money, I guess.
I think that my report, there is, there are some items that are there every week, every two weeks, it's because, I mean, indicate that I've discussed matters with various department heads and things like that. Then there are items where, that change regularly, that reflect the less-than-routine projects that I work on that do change from month to month, and I think my report reflects that when you read it, don't you, Ken?
Well, I think the consensus is to try it.
We'll try it.
We'll try it, and if we feel that we're getting sufficient information, that we'll continue it. If we feel that we need a different method, we'll discuss that again with you.
Brian, isn't there also some of the stuff that you're working on that isn't necessary to be published while you're working on it, right?
Well, and there's, you're right, there's that aspect of it where it's sometimes best for it to just be done and not have, it doesn't need a lot of publicity in terms of, sometimes the folks we're dealing with, their matters are private, sometimes it involves staff, sometimes it involves other matters, that I try to give an indication of what I've been doing, but I do not go into a lot of detail, that's true.
Well, this'll be better, be less reading.
You're happy, I'm happy.
Anything else? All right, we don't have any action items this evening, so we're going on.
Do we do that on consensus, then, is what you're saying?
Yes, the consensus is that we would try this.
We've decided that.
Yeah, we'll try it for a couple of months and see how it works. Onto information and discussion, the first thing is a shared ride taxi hours and service level.
Howard? Yes, from 2010 until very recently, there have been two taxi services in the city. The one supported through the city with subsidies and the other one on its own. Recently, the Platteville Cab Service that had been owned and operated by Mrs. Forbes has gone out of business. Her former customers are now using our Platteville Public Transportation shared ride. As a result, ridership and wait times have increased significantly. We're currently working with these, with our folks to analyze the depth of the problem, and we have basically two recommendations or two options moving forward. We can do nothing, in which case they will continue to manage their driver hours as allocated, as budgeted, and it may result in increased waiting times for passengers. The other would be to increase budget hours allowable. Federal and state contracts are fixed and established. We cannot change those for 2015. So if we do increase any hours, then the entire amount of the subsidy would be, would need to be paid for by the city. Based on the statistics so far, we're talking a full subsidy of roughly $20 an hour. Our contractor currently believes about 250 hours for the rest of 2015 would be helpful in reducing the wait times, so at $20 an hour, that's an additional $5,000. Now, what I'm going to be doing is, between now and the next time, is try to come up with the data from the taxi service to support the anecdotal information that I've gotten from a number of customers that have talked to me about the long wait times that they've had. Hopefully by then, I can have that to you for the next council meeting, and update the staff report with that information, and propose a, propose an option. At this point, I don't know where we would get $5,000 for this, but that would be something that we would have to look at if we decided to go that route.
Since I've been using the taxi, which I have the last three months, my wait time has not been as much, but I also plan in advance, and sometimes I call in advance a half hour, so they're there where I would like them. The other thing is, is I don't think whoever, the people who are taking the calls to get a taxi, I don't think they're indicating that there are buses. The people I've talked to that have a complaint, I'll say, well, the bus is going right by, or the bus is stopping here, and I don't think they know. I know that's an excuse, but I don't think they really know, and I think the people who are running the operation could mention that when they get a call. The other thing is, I want people to know that they double up on these calls. I mean, when I ride, there can be two, maybe three extra people on those, in those taxis, so they're not doing it individually. They're doubling up on the best routes they can manage. So I use the taxi once or twice a week, sometimes three times the last three months, and they're very nice people, very accommodating, and like I said, they function as best they can.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that, and the, I'm sure the taxi operators do appreciate that as well. Your instance about having to ride with other people, that's the definition of a shared ride taxi, and so that's, that's fine. Like I say, I've been getting calls from customers saying that they've called and they've had to wait for an hour or more before a taxi will be able to be there to pick them up, you know, so that's why I want to look at the data if at all possible.
Questions, anyone else? No comments?
I've heard that complaint, sorry, the long wait. Heard that at the Commission on Aging.
So you expect to be bringing this back at our next meeting, Howard, or will it take more time than that?
I think that we'll be able to have something for next meeting.
Next item is a resolution approving the Platteville Main Street Inc. Wireless Project. I don't know if any staff member wants to start.
Oh, no, actually, Jack was going to present on this.
We'll just have Jack Ludkey with the Main Street Program. You have something on your desk from the Main Street Wireless Project Plant, as well as some information in the packet.
Sorry about that, I'd have come up sooner, I wasn't sure who was carrying the ball. My name is Jack Ludkey, I'm the Executive Director for the Platteville Main Street Program, and we have supplied in your packet tonight a discussion and a proposed resolution to provide wireless service outside on the Main Street District that would encompass coverage for the city park, the museum campus, and the Main Street District in between, and also eventually the proposed library block project space. This has come up again, when I first started going through some things in our office, there was a proposal put together in 2007 for this. I think it was before its time, and you will see in the information I provided to you that it did not take off at that time. Several months ago then, it was revived again in discussions with the previous city manager and with inclusion of Brian in some of the discussions about providing this service. And the reason it came up again, too, is that I have some communications here from the state Main Street Program. There are cities all across Wisconsin now, these two particular ones are Whitewater and Watertown, that are providing this service to indicate that they are progressive cities, that businesses that are looking to locate in those communities, as well as in Platteville, have expectations that the city is in the age of communication, and that we feel that it is now time, this is the time that Platteville should really start looking at that. The one step that will be outlined in that, in that presentation has already been taken, and that is that the Community Fund of Southwest Wisconsin, the Platteville Fund, has allocated a grant of $4,000 for us to begin this project. We have put it out to bid, and both Compunit, which is the city's provider, and Netex Solutions here in Platteville, the local provider of services, have bid on this with Netex winning that bid at the total of just over $18,000. And we would like to have the opportunity, because this is a scaled project, we would like to have the opportunity to begin to install some of these sites, and as funds become more available, and you'll see in there, there is a request for city participation somehow in that funding effort, that we are able to provide that service. We are also working with the folks that are on the board of the Pecan Network, and so that we make sure that the equipment that is installed, if the city decides to move ahead with this, is compatible with other projects that they may want to do around town as well. And they have given our blessing to the Netex equipment already that is being proposed for this project.
Yeah, I think that pretty much covers the thumbnail look at the proposal that we have, and if you would have any further questions that I could either answer now or in the sake of time, since we're only on information at this point, I'm certainly available in my office to be contacted as well, and we can answer your questions, so.
Benefits, what are the benefits? You mentioned benefits to visitors and to local people?
Yes, it is.
Are these the local people that don't have the telephone, the cell phones to walk around with and hook up with?
Well, they do, but this would not use their minutes on their phones. They would be able to use the free Wi-Fi access, and we would put eventually a splash page that they would sign into and be able to, and believe me, Mr. Killian, I am not an expert in this field at all. I don't even have a smartphone, and the council president is laughing because she and I are two people that have the flip phones yet.
Me, too.
I just got a cell phone. I just got an iPhone, sorry, Jen.
You're ahead of me. But we, it is, it is a situation where, for instance, let's say people are in city park over here, and they want to use their tablets or their computers or their phones, they can get into the free network. Or let's say visitors are at the museum and they're outside, they can use their apparatus at that point. So that's the benefit. We wanted to also, in our discussions, make it clear that this would be a great marketing tool for the city of Platteville to be able to expand on. We'd hope other areas of the community as well, other parks would have that coverage at some point, and that's why we're in discussion with the folks that are in charge of the Pecan Network, to facilitate that in other areas of the community. Yes, now?
Jack, is this also meant for businesses that are located in the downtown area, for them to be able to have Wi-Fi service for their own business without having the expense of procuring that?
Well, it is not really, because this will not penetrate into the buildings. Now, if you're sitting, let's say, at Badger Brothers, and you're by a window, now Badger Brothers has free Wi-Fi, but let's say they didn't, you're by a window, you might have service, but there's, there's no guarantee. This is for outside.
This is total exterior outside any.
A visitor pulls up on Main Street in their car and they want to look at something, they certainly can do that without the expense of using their phone.
Oh, okay.
But not inside the building. Now, like I said, there is bleed into the buildings, as we've been told, but not significant enough that you could really utilize it.
Could it be, down the road, could it be made stronger so that it could be used in the buildings?
Well, we took a diff.
That'd be a whole different project, probably, right?
It could be, but we took a different approach to that question. We thought that possibly the existing businesses could be boosted enough that it could go outside, and that is not the case. We looked at that as being, they're already there, so why not utilize them, and we were told it would not work.
Okay.
Jack, would this be a problem with companies that sell this service to people to use for not, and you're in a compete zone, or are you going to be in a non-compete for businesses that sell Wi-Fi? Like if I, I have to pay for mine from CenturyLink, okay?
I understand that, and I guess that's linked to what the question.
I understand that, and I guess that's linked to what the question, Alderman Knoll asked about internal usage. Inside a building, for a business to utilize that, they would have to buy the service. It would not be from a competitive standpoint. And I think that since we're seeing so many communities in Wisconsin now doing this, and particularly aiming at public areas like City Park, or they have a Riverwalk area, it is geared more towards the visitor outside and is, is just not competing with the other services that are provided.
Thank you.
Okay. Under recommendation, it says expenditure of $6,000. And the question I wrote is, where's that money coming from? Who's contributing to $6,000?
Good question. I'm not sure that that question has been totally explored by the administration and with us. We have begun talks about it, but as I said, we have some of the money raised. We are looking to raise additional funds. We've asked for an extension on this grant from the Community Fund because it expires in November. And basically, that's why we're before you tonight. We would like by your next meeting in two weeks, hopefully favorable action after you've read through our material. Then we can proceed with this. If the council chooses not to support it, we would let the grant expire at this time, but I would encourage you to give it serious consideration because, as I said, you know, now is the time. We've got some seed money to start with, and we can scale it up from there.
Okay, my next question is under item three. It says consideration of funding for two or three sites, transmitting sites. Each site costs $3,000. Now, is the $3,000 part of the six? We have two sites, maybe $6,000.
Yes.
Three, and the recommendations are the same?
The two sites at $3,000 each are part of this. That's the $6,000.
That's the $6,000.
And what we were anticipating, those two sites to be the one located at City Hall and the one located at the museum.
And in the future, so to talk about the library as a site?
Possibly, yes. But we're, we're gonna continue to raise funds, and, and there's been some private interest as well along the Main Street area that, you know, we could possibly solicit funding from that source. The other side of this is that on an ongoing basis, of course, there's maintenance with this, and the Main Street Program would pick up the funding of that maintenance on a yearly basis.
Initially, when I read this, I thought, well, this is gonna be something paid for not using city funds. But it's not the case.
Well, it's not the case. We were requesting some. The city has every right to deny that request, but we hope follow the resolution and pass the resolution. But we also would like to see the city take a look seriously at providing some of that funding.
But then in here, in the, in the resolution, it says the city will not construct, own, or operate, but we're gonna be paying for something, but we won't own it.
That is correct. But it also says in there that if the Main Street, in the future, decides to terminate the operation, that equipment can be gifted to, and will be gifted probably to the city.
Yes, I read that.
Yeah.
Well, I guess you're getting a grant for $4,000.
Yes.
And if the city doesn't contribute, you're gonna give that grant up?
It's a, it's an $18,000 project, and we can't, with the, with the $4,000, if that's all we have, we would only be able to initiate the beginning of a time. We couldn't carry it far enough. And I think what we're trying to do is get at least half of that $18,000 in play before we decide to either kill the project or move forward.
So in other words, you're asking, you're hoping that the city will contribute enough to help you get at least halfway, so then you can
Right.
acquire more funding through donations and grants and other things?
Right. And we, you know, there are, there are a number of sources besides just private individuals, but there are other grant opportunities that we could go back for. But we want to be able to say, here, we've got this much. We can go ahead and then scale it from there.
Okay. In other words, the $4,000 plus the $6,000?
Correct.
$10,000 for your over half?
Correct.
Okay.
I have a question for Dwayne. Is there any possibility of any place where we could get this extra money?
Well, we no longer have a contingency fund, so it's a matter of, I don't know.
Pulling it out of one and?
That's much you'd have to do. I mean, otherwise you could wait till the budget session and do it that way, but.
Okay. I really like this idea because what it does is give us an edge in providing services to tourism, services also to students and other possibilities of just expanding, and that's the way it's going right now. If we don't do something, and we, we could be losing out on possibilities of businesses that are looking for that, not for themselves per se, for their own wireless service, but for that maybe being able to provide for others. In other words, becoming a hotspot within an area of southwest Wisconsin that other communities aren't. So I really like the idea. I just don't know whether we would have the funds available.
If I, if I may say something too, we'd certainly like to have the commitment from the city on the funds. It does not necessarily have to be out of this budget, existing budget, because it's going to be installed over a period of time. And it could be incorporated if possible into the 2016 budget if, if that would go that far. And that's why I'm saying it could be scaled. What we do need is, is the commitment that the city would, would do that, and I think you'll see that in our, in our presentation.
Does the Chamber get involved in this? Chamber of Commerce?
They have not, as yet, no.
Have they been approached?
No.
Okay.
Have other, have the Main Street businesses themselves been approached about making this a possibility for them? I mean, not just the Main Street Program, but individual businesses. What's their thoughts?
There, there has been conversations with some of the individual businesses, particularly those that have the free Wi-Fi now, to explain to them the difference between what they're providing now and what this would mean. And they're supportive of it because they see the need for it in the downtown area. There's also been some discussion with some of the private individuals that have apartments up front that face Main Street, where there could be some bleed and their, their tenants could use it. That's why I'm saying there is a possibility for additional private funding. But it's been very limited at this point. And we were kinda caught in, I'm sorry, in the, in the transition between the previous administrator and, of course, Karen coming on board. And we kind of let it lay quietly for a while. Well, she got a little bit acclimated into her position before we brought it forward. And to answer Barb's question about the Chamber, we did not at this point do anything, but that doesn't preclude us from working for the Chamber or taking their money if they wanna get involved in the process. This is what we see to be the first step in making areas of our city available to the internet for visitors to the community.
So what I don't see here then is the Main Street Program making any initial contribution to the project?
We, we wrote the grant, Ken. We got $4,000.
How much?
Four grand.
You got a grant, but that's, that's money from the Community Fund.
Yeah, but we wrote the grant and requested the money, so.
Yes, but what I'm saying is there's not a contribution from the Main Street Program per se.
Would you like to write the grant?
Well, to, to the point too, I think another way to frame this is you did pledge that you would pay the $1,200 annual maintenance.
We are.
And that you would fundraise the rest of the money, which is a lot of labor and time that Main Street would be committing to the project.
$1,200 is in the future. What I'm talking about is contribution money right now to start this off.
Well.
Where's the Main Street contribution?
It's their time and labor for putting it all together and fundraising, Ken. That's another way to look at it.
Well, that's, I've written grants. I understand that, but it's not actual dollars.
Ken, it's not just the grants. It's the hours of time we've spent in contributing to making this project work. Now, if you're talking about dollars contributed?
I'm dollars contributing.
We're a nonprofit organization, and we have a budget which is tight, and we're always looking for more money. So if you, I'd be happy to sit with you. If you can find money in our budget, then we can talk about it.
Just asking a question. What's your contribution?
I think you're probably looking at the contribution in me and the time and effort that we put into this project.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last information, item EMS trust accounts disposition. Brian?
Good evening. With the impending transition from the city-based EMS to the hospital-based EMS, there are several accounts, trust accounts, that the ambulance service has through the city that need to be, or have a disposition. There is a memo that I wrote along with the city manager. It's also been reviewed by the city attorney, the finance director, and the director of administration. Going through that, the EMS township payments for building, there's $2,205.73. That account was created when we were discussing a new building for the ambulance service. Since that is happening as a hospital department now, that money is still in the account. Townships did not want it back when they were asked about it. They wanted it to remain in the account because they said even if EMS wasn't going to get a new building through the city, fire wouldn't need something. Those fun, that fund was created to pay for building expenses. There'd be surveying land, any of that, those things. So townships did make their portion of the payment. The city committed also, but at that time, no city money was transferred into that account. So it's our recommendation that the accounts be renamed to the Fire Department Township Payments for Building and transferred to the Fire Department. The Auto Pulse Donations Fund has a zero balance, so we're recommending that be closed. The EMS Donation Supply Fund, the money from that account was used to offset expenses for operating supplies that we've already purchased for the year, so that balance is zero. The Members Fund, as it says in the memo, that was used for membership appreciation, which is a line item, and subscription and dues, which the staff receives benefits from. So that balance is currently $52.84. Sure, by the time the transition happens, that will probably be zero, so it's recommended that it kind of be closed. The EMS AED Fund was the fund created when we were doing the Project Pulse fundraising. And there's currently now a little less than $1,426.51. I say a little bit less than that because we have had to purchase some pads to replace, some pads that were outdated. The recommendation is that that fund be renamed AED Fund and transferred to Public Works because the Assistant to the Public Works Director is the one that's gonna be responsible for overseeing the AEDs, checking them and making sure that the pads and everything are current and up to date. So since they're the ones that's gonna be responsible for managing those, I figure that that's where the account should go. The Act 102 Funds, there is currently $6,543.36. Under Wisconsin Act 102 from 1989, those funds are to be used for training and for certain equipment purchases. It is a very managed account. We have to do a detailed report every year. I did check with the state EMS office, which is the agency that oversees the Act 102 funding, and their recommendation was that it be transferred to Southwest Health because of the statutory requirements, and that it can only be used by an EMS agency. And if it is not, this money has to be returned to the state of Wisconsin to be compliant with statute. So the Gribble Trust, the Loveland Trust, and the Harshorn Trust were all trust accounts that were created. Those individual trusts gave money on a yearly, on an annual basis to Platteville EMS several years ago. That was changed and was, I believe, rolled into the Community Fund. Nope. Barb's taking her head, no.
Now, the trust account, the First National Bank Trust Department was sold to First National Bank of Beloit. So the First National Bank of Beloit holds those trust funds.
Those, we're no longer receiving the annual payments from those. So those accounts have been sitting empty for a couple of years now, so our recommendation is that those be closed. The Binding Trust, when Mr. Binding passed away, he had set aside that the remainder of his estate be left to certain organizations or certain entities upon the passing of his wife, who passed away last year. One, Platteville EMS was one of the benefactors of that trust because in his will, he had put EMT Services, Ambulance and Emergencies in Platteville. So as the ambulance provider for Platteville area, we were the benefactor of that. We received $44,303.33. Approximately a little over $15,000 was used towards the purchase of the Auto Policies, which was approved by the city council. That purchase was made in early 2015. Current balance is $28,749.37. It is the recommendation of staff in keeping with the original, which is Mr. Binding, that the trust be transferred to Southwest Health, since Southwest Health will be the ambulance provider for Platteville. Southwest Health was also a benefactor. And speaking with the city attorney, he said that it does show that he was, did wanna make contributions to emergency care and healthcare for the city, so that would be keeping with the original intentions of the will. And then the reserve for the new ambulance, as discussed in previous meeting with the townships, that money would be set aside until a meeting of the townships and the city for the dispersal of that money. So those are the recommendations. Are there any questions?
I have a question about the Binding Trust. I obviously haven't seen the original language, but is there, is there a chance that it could be open to interpretation that fire could actually qualify as EMS service or emergency service in the town, that it might be something we could transfer to the Fire Department program?
Well, the memo, I tried to give the, give information to the councils to the words that were used in the will. The bequest was to EMT Services, and then the words that follow are in parentheses, "Ambulance and Emergencies in Platteville, Wisconsin." I interpret that sort of structure as to say, okay, the organization is EMT Services, and then what follows in parentheses is an explanation or a description of what that money's supposed to be used for by that organization. I mean, is there a, I'm not trying to tell you that there's a law that says that's how you have to read this, but that's, I think, a reasonable way to, to read it, and I hope that at least begins to answer your question.
Well, then a second follow-up question to be creative about how we retain it at the city and use it to pay our EMS fee to Southwest Health each year? Or at least the beginning of the first year, because it wasn't either.
I mean, that would be to provide ambulance, and I'm looking for the- and I'm looking for the, that would be ambulance, it certainly would follow the, part of the parentheses, the words that are in parentheses, ambulance and emergencies. So I mean, that would be a possible interpretation. And I wrote this memo on Thursday, and we had a very short window to get something to you before the holiday began for me, anyway. And I've done some thinking about it over the weekend and trying to put this into a, you know, I think the memo is a reasonable idea or, you know, box to put this into is, okay, how do we think about this? Another way that you could think about it that I think is reasonable is if this, first of all, this bequest was made and it's completed. The money is where it was supposed to go under the will. Now, if this was an organization separate from the city, a charitable organization separate from the city, and that entity went out of business, ceased to exist, and by law then, it has to dispose of its funds in a way that's consistent with its designation as a charitable charitable entity. So it is required to give its funds to a similarly classified entity. It can't give it away to its members. It can't just hand it out on the street. You got, it has to go to another charitable organization that fits within the general category.
So it would seem reasonable that we could use it as a payment to Southwest Health or towards our payment to Southwest Health, because it would go to them to provide ambulance service.
Well, I'm going to take this a little bit further than where you started. The city, so the EMS is going out of business. It's no longer going to be within the city. The city could take the position that, okay, well, this is, it's EMT money, but it's city funds. And as an exempt organization, tax-exempt organization, the city is perfectly legally entitled to keep that money and use it for legitimate city purposes. Now, would that be in keeping with what Mr. Binding said he wanted this money used for? I think there's arguments either way. You know, I guess my opinion doesn't really make much difference.
Well, no, just from like a legal standpoint, I'm reading EMT services, so we would be using it to buy services, EMT services for the city of Platteville.
You parse the language as you choose. I say EMT services is the organization that's supposed to get it. I say the words that follow in parentheses are a description of what that's for.
Okay.
Now, you read it differently and, you know, I can't.
I haven't seen the whole document, right, but I think that's something that's fascinating, because we do have large payments coming up to make to Southwest Health, and so it would be interesting if we can figure out a way to use this towards that.
Really don't need to see the whole document because that's the extent of the words.
Okay.
What does the lawyer that drafted the will or distributed the estate? Does he contact them?
We didn't consult that, no.
Okay.
Mount City Bank was the one holding the trust.
They're the trustee.
And really, the justification there too would be Southwest Health Center's building a new facility that's benefiting the city in the long term and the EMS in the long term. And so this funding would help do that while also helping us not have to have such an amount of debt.
As I said in the memo, I think there's other reasonable alternatives or interpretations.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. Is this coming back to us for action next time?
It'll be the last council meeting they'll be attending as a city employee.
It'll be coming back?
Yep.
Okay, and then how about this $179,000? Will the city and the towns have decided by the next council meeting as to what to do to $179,000?
No, that was at the closed session meeting on May 7th. That was decided then that that money would be set aside next year after the first payment is due and decided amongst the township and the city how that money was going to be dispersed. It's more than likely going to be used to cover the $100,000 payment to the hospital for services.
For the subsidy to the hospital?
Correct. That's, at that time, that's what the money was.
Because I wouldn't want to give it to the hospital for buying a new ambulance and then have to also give a support payment.
So we're talking about how much?
$179,000.
No, 30.
That's different on the Binding Trust.
Oh, I'm talking about reserve for new ambulance.
That's a city account that stays with the city.
There's two different ones, the Binding Trust and then the Reserve for the Ambulance. They're both relatively large numbers.
The remainder of the Binding Trust is how much for?
So saying it again, city and the townships have decided to keep the money, $179?
Yes. That money was set aside in the sinking fund for the ambulance.
And not give it to Southwest Health?
Nope, that money's never been set aside to go to the hospital.
Any other questions? Well, if you think of any, you certainly can ask city manager and Brian and Brian to help out with answers before our next meeting. Our next item then is to go into closed session, so we need a motion to do so.
I move we go to closed session for Wisconsin statute 1985, parent one, parent E deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting, conducting other specified public business where member competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, library block project.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second and we'll vote.
Nichols?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Motion carries.